Alex, can you see the share screen button? On yours? I think you should be able to. That by the like exit sign.
Up by the exit sign.
For the leave or hang up button.
Oh, there's the, yeah, I see. I've got a share button. Yeah, I see it. All right, everybody, it's four thirty. I think we'll get started. Meredith, we do roll call.
Chairman Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Petty.
Here.
Commissioner Rock.
Here.
Commissioner Milkbeath is absent. Commissioner Pa is absent. Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
And we have a vacant seat, but we do have a quorum.
Okay, great. We have a quorum. We'll get moving forward. Do you want to confirm that all advertising was done correctly and the timeframes needed?
Yes, it was.
Okay, great. I also want to remind commissioners, any if any discussions, ex parte communications, or any conflicts of interest, please let us know that at the time of those items. All right. The first item, we'll review and approve the minutes. Said everybody had a chance to review and approve the minutes that were in the packet. All right, I make a motion. We approve the October seventh and October fourteenth meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, we do not have any preliminary flat or preliminary plan minutes or meetings, so we will skip over that. Consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions? On that one? Hearing that, I'm open for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Right?
Aye.
All right. Then we're on to new business. You've got the it's kind of combined into several items. So the design review, you want to do this because they all have separate.
So it's all under designer view twenty-five thirteen.
Okay.
And then I thought we could go building by building. Alex does have a presentation. That's Alex Sawyer, the applicant representative. So we can flip flop through the packet depending how his presentation is structured. Or whichever we're drawn to. But they're like chapters. It's a chapter.
Yeah, I can see that. So, okay, so we'll go to design review twenty-five thirteen. This is a public hearing. I make a motion. We open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, I believe Alex, you have a presentation for us on that one. Uh, yeah, yes, sir, I do. Give me just a second here to share. See, screen. Does everyone see my screen on the?
Yep.
Oh, great. So this is Broken Ridge Commons Phase Two. This is Design Review One. This isn't comprehensive, but we'll get into that as we move along. I appreciate the opportunity to present this project for design review to building zoning. Since we last discussed this project, we have incorporated a number of changes that I'd like to go through. We are asking for, we're asking to combine lots eighty-one and eighty-two for the independent, which is a movie theater. We added a roof deck without seating and a partial basement to house HVAC and storage to the independent as well. We significantly shrank the storage building from seven thousand square or two, two seven thousand square feet from eleven thousand square feet. So we reduced it by nine, four thousand square feet. We removed a significant amount of impervious paving from the mini storage part of the site because it is now one story instead of two. Total required parking has jumped from sixty-six spaces to sixty-nine spaces. Total surface parking provided is ninety-two spaces if you include micro townie garages and live-work driveways and garages. So total, total of this development, ninety-two spaces are provided. And we are exploring a climbing gym use instead of a yoga or CrossFit studio. And we are currently finalizing engineering approval with Morgan. In fact, I just got, literally just got my, my packet from my engineer to submit to Morgan for, for hopefully the final review for engineering approval on this. Tonight's review only covers the West Valley Road part of this development. So that includes the mini storage, the live-work units, and the independent. Brief note on materials here. So it is our intent to use a common material language for this phase of the project across all the commercial uses, residential and mixed-use buildings. If you guys have questions, I'm going to go through this fast. So if you guys have questions, please feel pretty slot me.
Alex, I might just comment that we did review the plans for the micro townhomes. Because you sent them to us, but if we want to leave those out, we can. Are you expecting a change on those?
Uh, there may actually be a change on those, Meredith, depending on some of the engineering questions that are coming up on this.
Okay.
I think I was working on the assumption that they, all the little lots were the same. It's kind of shaking out that may not be the case. So, so yeah, I, if we could hold on those and do that as part of the part two here, when we do the other two commercial buildings, that would be helpful.
Sure.
So many storage. Of note, again, the lower floor. That's the wrong note. So the mini storage, the lower floor of the mini storage has been eliminated. It's a single-story structure now. You will find that there are two separate buildings. Each building will be accessed by an individual keypad. Code in each building will have cameras in the, in the public areas. On the left building, as you see it in plan here, there will be thirty-nine, five by ten units. Each unit will have its own door and its own access. On the right-hand side, there will be nineteen, ten-foot by ten-foot units, again, each with their own door, separated by a covered walkway. Sorry, the reason that we did, did it this way is because it allows us to build this using wood frame construction. So it reduced the, the the fire area to under a limit that again allows us to wood frame it. And we also felt that this was considering the snow in McCall, maybe a little better way of getting in and out versus having to try and get stuff in and out through the sidewalk access off of the parking lot. Here are the elevations. Again, it's a combination of wood and some steel siding. We feel that this also kind of reduces the massing a little bit, makes it feel a little more residential than, than it would have been if it had been one giant building. It's also worth noting, and the dash line here, the roof will be reconfigured so that it holds no per engineering comments. It currently is drawn as a slope, but we will make it a flat roof and we'll, we'll bring parapets up to give it the look of this slope roof, but the roof itself will be flat. Very basic site plan. This is, the planting itself is still under review with Stack Rock as we're going through and doing this engineering review. But, but this is a pretty good representation of what will be green and what will be parking. Again, with the walkway access in the center. The other thing of note here is that we did add some additional parking to the east of this this new parking here, which provides some additional overflow spaces for the residential and the commercial uses in the site. These are the live-work units. These are four mixed-units buildings, each with its own storefront, more or less, facing Broken Ridge Way. A thing to note here, we did remove the basements from these because we were running into some challenges with the grading that wasn't really allowing us to do it. If you look, so this is a lower floor and the upper floor plans. The thing of note here is that what is in Red Hatch is the commercial space and that this space will be independently leasable. So you could potentially live here and work here. However, if you wanted to live here and lease the space out to a, to a third party, you could. Which means that this will all have to be fire separated and sprinkled. And we're working through that with John Powell, but, but it is important to note that, yes, it, it is leasable as its own sort of independent entity. The residential portion is two beds, two bath. And like I said before, there will be fire separation between those two uses. And here is elevation and sort of the same mix of materials that we had talked about before, stucco, shiplap siding, V groove siding, and some metal siding as well. Again, sort of a very basic site plan. One of the things worth commenting here, and Meredith, I think this had come up in something that you had sent to me. We, we will be, we won't be bifurcating a parking space with a lot line. Anywhere that occurs, we'll go ahead and just make that a planting area, not a parking space. But as I stated before, we, we are still, even doing that, we are still well within the limits that we need to, or the we need to meet for, for parking for this development. Last but not least, this is the independence. This is a movie theater that we are proposing. This is the first floor plan. This is a section through showing the size of the projection screen. So we'll be able to get a a full-size screen into this building, even though it will be one screen, it will, it will be full-sized. And there's approximately a hundred fixed seats in, in the entire building. So here up front, we'll have seating for, again, projected movies. We see those movies as being some first runs, also some independents and local film as well. Behind that, there's a dining area and a bar. And the area that you see in gray here will be a commercial kitchen. And then this would be the bar area. Over here is an A V space with and then restroom facilities, a ticketing area, and then stairs up to an upper deck. And then also downstairs, there's a mechanical room beneath this. The thing I think is worth pointing out, and one of the things that I think we were discussing is the structure of how this would actually run. And how we believe that this is best going to work is if we bring in a vendor or a tenant that is a restaurant tour, that knows how to, you know, set up and operate food service business. And that would, you know, encompass obviously the bar and the kitchen, which would, would need to be outfit to their use. Like we, we would need to, to identify who that person or group was and then fit out the kitchen to their needs. Same with the bar. And then they would have seating area and, and access to obviously the, the screening area and to the stage and et cetera, et cetera. But the, the way that that would be managed is through actually a separate nonprofit. We, we think we would set up a small arts nonprofit. They would be in charge of programming, movies, lining up movies, lining up anybody that was going to come in and perform. Or any other sort of arts-related activities that would happen within this space. And so, you know, over time, perhaps the, the use, the restaurant use here might change vendor or renters. But, but we feel that nonprofit kind of sticks with this space and is, is with it in perpetuity. So again, about a hundred fixed seats, a kitchen area, a bar area, restroom facilities, a ticketing space, and then a small stage. And then here's the projection screen. On the second floor, we have a roof deck area right here. This is obviously in McCall going to be seasonal. We could put a small bar up there. And, and it's just sort of a mix and mingle. See the mountains, see the lake. I guess you're not going to see the lake from here, but see the mountains. Not, it's not meant to be an entertainment venue per se. It's just really an outside space to, to have a drink and hang out with friends. We also have an operation space over here. This is where that nonprofit that I was talking about would work out of. And then there's a small restroom up here as well. Here we are in elevation. Again, concrete, a mix of concrete, standing seam, and V groove wood siding. Max height here is thirty-one feet. Then here's the north and west elevations. A thing of note here is that this would be the wall that the summer screen would be projected on. I know there's been some conversation about how that would work and you know, we are, we are obviously sensitive to noise ordinances and don't want to be a nuisance to any of our neighbors. So this would either be, be during, you know, hours earlier in the day. During the summer in particular, I think a lot of this programming would be geared towards local kids and making sure they have a place to come and sort of hang out and watch a movie on the weekends. We could also set up a way of doing this where we would have, kind of like you would use in a drive-in movie theater, either a small Bluetooth speaker or earbud headphone sort of situation where that's how the sound is transmitted to the folks watching the movie. We are working with our landscape architect as well to figure out how that sort of graded space in front of the theater or in front of this projection would look like. We could maybe put some berms in or some way to, to create a real little communal space there. That would, that would be nice again for those summer months where, where the kids are looking for something to do outside. Again, sort of a show you where, where what's green and where the trees are going to be as currently envisioned by our landscape architects. This would be our sort of viewing lawn over here. All of this obviously is going to be snow easements. There's not much that we can do there. But we'll have a couple other green islands here and some tree planting and some additional landscaping to go with it. The other thing I would like to address just very quickly, we had received some public comments prior to this, prior to this meeting, and I just want to briefly touch on those. And, and the, the four sort of categories here, onsite management, outside screening for the independent, will the storage be secured and what about parking? So, so on the first question here, there will definitely be an active onsite HOA management team in place who will manage the maintenance and trash. It will be a separate entity from the current HOA for, for Phase One. The current HOA has been granted authority, obviously, this, this has been done a while ago, to manage all aspects of maintenance to include scheduling trash pickups within the current development. We've been sent some images of some overflowing trash cans and dumpsters and that sort of thing in, in the current development. So I just want to again emphasize that that is a, that is an HOA thing that, that they should be hopping on that and they need to add some additional trash pickup, they should. In the new mixed-use HOA, there will be a dumpster for the commercial unit. So there will be a dumpster for the micro townhomes. And then the, each of the live-work units will have their own trash cans. And again, how that trash pickup is handled and managed will be, will be the, the purview of that HOA once it's been put in place. Outside screening for the independent and in particular sort of noise ordinances, we will of course observe quiet times of ten P M. to eight A M. per McCall city ordinance. Unless any kind of special approval has been granted by the HOA board or the city of McCall. So we are sensitive to our neighbors. We, we don't want to have all-night parties, of course, unless that is something, again, that goes to the proper channels and we get the proper approvals. But otherwise, you know, between the hours of ten P M. and eight A M., we will, we will keep them indoors. Storage be secured, of course, as I showed earlier. It will be locked up. It will be accessed by a keypad. Be eliminated any sort of vehicular storage below again because of the grading issues with the site. So it is just the one story. It will be locked. It will be accessed by a keypad. And then each unit within the building itself will have its own locked door, overhead door that, that you will be able to open to, to get your own stuff into it. Part of the reason too, and I think this is worth noting, is that part of the reason that we're, we're building this storage unit is because it will, in our hopes, allow folks access to additional storage outside of just using their garages and will allow people to use their garages versus having to store in their driveway and then, or store in the, store things in the garage, park in their driveway or park on the street. So, so hopefully this also helps alleviate some of those maybe parking challenges that Phase One has, has been having. And, and on that note, parking. As I said before, we are providing parking in excess of what is required. And we will work with the city, obviously during the design process, that we are crafting sufficient covenants, conditions, and restrictions, providing adequate package of signage in a way finding to ensure that parking is marked with its intended use. This should also include conveying that like no boat or trailer parking is allowed on the streets. And per the C C, C C N Rs, once that is handed over to the HOA, the HOA will then be in charge of sort of enforcing those rules. I believe that is all I have. Are there any questions? Commissioners, any questions for Alex?
This is Dave. Will the storage units be available to the existing Broken Horn Ridge Townhome people?
Um, Dave, you know, that is, that is a good question. The, the answer to that is, we are, we are hoping that it will almost exclusively be you guys. We're working with the HOA to, to sort of figure out how that would work, but but the answer is yes, it would, it will be available definitely to you guys. Whether or not it then gets opened up to other people outside of Phase One is, is, is the sort of open question which we don't have an answer to yet. Any other questions for Alex before we go to staff report?
I had a question on the, the rooftop deck. Just thinking through, you know, timelines, you know, noise ordinance is at ten, but it doesn't get dark until ten in the summer. Have you anticipated doing anything to like control noise or parties or whatever from happening on that rooftop?
You know, it's a good question. I, I don't know that I have a concise answer to that yet. We, we really do see that rooftop portion as being pretty much equivalent to an outside patio, right? Like that, that's the same sort of use that you would get if it was at grade and somebody was walking outside and talking to a friend. Now, whether or not we limit potentially, you know, private gatherings and that sort of thing on that roof deck past a certain hour, like I said before, of course, that would need to go through an HOA approval and perhaps a city approval. But, but in, in conjunction with that, you know, there may be ways to revise some kind of, of screening that would, would help with that noise a little bit, especially pointing the, the sides of that patio that are adjacent to more residential uses. But, but I don't have a better answer than that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Alex at this point? Okay, we'll go to the staff report, Meredith.
Okay. And I'll go in packet order. So the first segment that we looked at within the packet would be the live-work units. So on these, they are located in the southern portion of that site plan in between the mini storage and that movie theater building. And so the, the floor plan and design, thanks Alex. There they are, they're on at the bottom. There's four of them and they will either be mirrored or they will all four be the same. It's not like a substantial change to the outward appearance if they're all the same floor plan facing outward or mirrored. So I'm going to defer that to the design process if the commission is comfortable with that. From the review process, what we did notice about these is that there's not amazing front door coverings for patrons within the commercial area for the live-work spaces. So we just recommended that front door coverings be added to the building design, even if they should fall outside of the platted footprint to protect customers who might be coming into those commercial spaces. The community commercial zone provides a lot of deference to providing coverings for pedestrians and such. So that seems like it's a, a thing that can be managed through the building permit process. And we did recommend kind of mirroring the roof slope so that there's not going to be a big heavy cap of snow on top of a flat section, but ultimately that's allowable within code. We would just wanted to catch snow management where we can in the design process. And Alex has been pretty flexible in conversations about that. And then he did address in his presentation what they've been doing about the parking spot, parking spots that are split between lot lines. Given that they're recovering parking spaces by adding a few more to the west of the mini storage area, I think it's a great benefit to those sites to add landscaping in between. Because green space can be hard to come by and being surrounded by a sea of asphalt is certainly not the best experience in the world. And so for those live-work units, it's really clearing up. Do you want covered space for pedestrians to enter, enter the building? How would you like that to be designed? And making sure that those landscaped areas then get reflected on the final plaque when that should be applied for in lieu of the parking spaces that were originally placed in that location. So these ones were pretty simple. They meet and exceed really our standard for both mixed-use design and this area. So from the staff perspective, they look great and they comply with the plat and the planned unit development goals and details. Does the commission have any questions on the live-work buildings?
Nope, yes, we don't.
Okay.
Meredith, are there any code questions as far as the commercial occupant being different than the deeded owner?
No, that's, that can really be managed on a, on a tenant basis. It's really the structure of the lease and, and how an insurance company feels about it, but there's no requirement that they be under the same entity. In cases like this, it'd be the same as someone in their private home renting their garage to a hobby mechanic if they don't have a garage at home. I don't know how insurance companies feel about that mixed-use arrangement, but that would be on the owner to manage.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, you ready for the next one? I will skip some of the micro townhomes. Because we said we were going to do that and we will go to the mini storage. So as Alex described, initially, this was planned to be a two-story building that would have folks walking into the upstairs and then any amount of drive-in storage possible within the downstairs. But after further analysis, they determined that that was not a great use of this footprint site. And I think that I agree. And a two-story building has a lot of impact outward and inward into the rest of the Broken Ridge development. So Alex and his team redesigned this one to be one story. And then in working with staff during analysis, they, they are going to reduce the pitch of that roof because there had been a slope that would dump and shut a lot of that snow onto the pathway to the south that is going to serve hopefully a regional amount of people down West Valley Road. So the slope on that roof will be decreased to protect the pedestrian area to the south. And then I think the, the interior design and hoping to serve the needs of the adjacent ownership as well as whoever's left to exact business with the, the landowner and the property owner is a good solution. We've heard that there's things that belong in garages that are outside in the Broken Ridge area. So hopefully this will help clean up some of the toys that seem to multiply in our community when not given enough space. Um, other than that, we just wanted to make sure that the civil plans that will come with the mini storage project do in fact show a one-story building when they're turned in and that the existing pathway as constructed is shown within the final site plan. So that we know the relationship and distance of that building to the pathway and its exact measurement. Those were the simple ones we had for that. Any questions on the mini storage?
Nope.
Okay. So then the independent movie theater, et cetera. Um, this one was actually kind of fun to review. I really, really hope it gets built someday if you all approve it because I hear, I never hear the end of, we want a movie theater. We want it back. So on this, in general, the, the floor plan and building across two lines. So on this in general, the, the floor plan and building across two lots is fine and makes sense. It would be up to the, the future owner or manager one day if they wanted to separate that into two separate tenant improvements and commercial spaces to do so. But um, there are multiple business entities that utilize multiple lots at this time, including Salmon River Brewery. So that is not a new concept to have a single space running across multiple lots. Um, it's just efficient use of a large building at that point. Um, the issues that we identified with this building were related to um, outdoor lighting, bike parking. Um, and some of the basic amenities in the um, commercial zones. So we recommend that prior to issuance of the building permit for this building, we see the, the bike parking plan and fixtures, the outdoor lighting fixtures. Um, and then probably the irrigation plan to serve um, any of the surrounding plantings that'll go in. Um, the other two hangout points that we had on this one were on the east facing. Building facade, um. That's attached to the, the part of the movie theater where you don't want windows, where you're actually screening movies. Um, it appears to be a blank wall because it's a pretty expansive tall mass. Um, in working with the um. East facing. Perfect. Um, in working with the consulting planner who helped review these from Jacobs. Um, she and I discussed and recommended the commission perhaps requiring some vertical landscaping along that building portion because requiring windows in that area would. Kind of defeat the purpose of seeing movies. Um, and vertical landscaping and/or a mural or public art dedication could be a, a good compromise in um, resolving the blank wall issue. And creating a nice outward appearance to the public realm, but um, making movies viewable in indoor environments. Dave, your mic is doing some interesting things. Thank you. Um, and then the last one was similar to the uh, live work units. A lot of the pedestrian approach area into the buildings at this time is not currently covered. Um, especially when we think about bike parking for this area, it, it wouldn't be a bad thing to include um. A covered entryway into this area that could also be where kids, if it's raining, wait for mom and dad to pick them up. Or um, any, any type of people, wait for people to pick them up. So we would be comfortable if the commission is comfortable. Um, allowing for some covered exterior space um, to enter that building. Um, just to be realistic with the way snow works and rain works in our community. Um, but it would be outside of the platted footprint in that location. So on that, um. Those are all my comments. I think I tried to embed in the conditions of approval that I drafted. That those design changes be added to final design while submitting for building permit. So I don't know if I had any last minute add-ons or recommendations, but I'm happy to stand for any additional questions.
Um, on that blank wall, besides landscaping, is there? Many discussion on any? Something different with the siding or just something that breaks it up a little bit more and not doing windows, obviously, but something to just break up that, like well, architectural wise?
I don't know if we brought up options, they definitely exist. You know, there's, there's. Rather cool um, steel siding sculptures that play with light. A lot, um, so they can look different depending on how the lights hitting them. Um, so if you wanted for the applicant to work with staff on something, we can either bring it back. At a future meeting for this one, or they could just work with staff on. A good solution for that section of building if you don't like the vertical landscaping idea.
I think would be in addition to that.
In addition to it, okay.
I, I personally would like to see something more creative along there. Granted that they can't do windows, but something that breaks it up a little bit more than the just that big wall because landscaping is not going to cover it enough.
Right.
Eventually it will be more, but I think they can do a little bit to it to, then that'd be extensive, but I think you have an idea of the staff have seen enough that know. You could create something there that looks nicer.
Uh, Meredith, I. You guys would all think I'm not doing my job if I didn't ask about the parks and rec requirement.
Yes.
Because there'll be sixteen units with the micro town homes, right?
Yeah, so the parks requirement is covered within the um, plat and PUD that's approved for the project. So they either have to um, construct a parking lot to serve a regional park. And or contribute an in-lu fee to the city, but that's already. Blessed and signed into approval via their um, planned unit development and plat process, and so we don't have to navigate it again in design review.
So it was finalized in phase one?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other questions for Meredith before we go to Morgan? Okay, Morgan, your thoughts?
Hello commissioners, um. Let's see, I don't think I had too many comments left on this project. I know there's a few nitpicky comments in there that I had and Alex mentioned he has an updated civil plan set for me. Um, so I had a few um, questions. About like fixture worksheets for all the floor plans so we could size the water meters appropriately. Um, there's stormwater report was approved with the initial. Filing of the project and then they provided a memo that says that they're following what was recommended in that and they're not changing that. Um, so they're in compliance with their stormwater. Uh, most of these comments are just regarding uh, water mains and the services for if fire lines are needed. Um, let's see. I think that was most of my comments. I had questions about ADA parking and if they needed any to identify those on their civil plans to make sure all the grading works out for them. Um, and then I also had. And a, a comment in there, we had to rerun their hydraulic model because the original one done, was done. I think over ten years ago, so there were some changes that needed to occur on the water main design. Um, but they're addressing those, I believe in this next updated plan set because we've had other conversations with our consultants about options for meeting. The requirements of the hydraulic model. Um. Yeah, let me know if you have any questions.
All right, commissioners, any questions for Morgan? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll go to public comment. Is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? If you're muted, you may need to hit star six. On phone, anybody online or on the phone wish to comment? Is there anybody here in the audience that wishes to comment regarding this application? Hey, one last chance, anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment?
I would just echo Meredith's approval of the uh, or desire for a movie theater. I think that would be great, so. I know my voice doesn't mean much, but I think that's a great idea.
You need to have your name and address, even though I know who you are still for the record.
My name is Vince Beer. My address is six twelve Diamond Street in McCall, Idaho. And my comment is just that a movie theater would be great in McCall.
All right, thanks Vince. Okay, one last time, anybody else online or on the phone? Comment. Okay. Um, with that, I don't, um, Alex, do you have anything else you'd like to add on?
Uh, no sir, I, I think I've covered everything I need to cover. Uh, the, the only other thing I would say is that uh. We would definitely be open, Meredith, to, to working with you and your team on, on um. Either some sort of public art or, or some other methodology for, for that plank facade. Uh, yeah, I would love to see something creative there. I mean. Uh, unfortunately, we can't punch holes in it, but, but we can certainly find something that will, that would be cool and nice and, and uh. You know, added it to the project.
Okay, great. All right, commissioners, before we close public comment or public hearing, um, is there any questions for staff?
Just to, to confirm with Meredith, uh, staff feels comfortable of uh, discussing with the applicant on entrance covers for the commercial and residential as well as the independent sidewall?
You might add um, the sidewall as a condition of approval. Uh, I don't know if I typed that one out in earnest. So I would. Include that as provide updated design elevations combining vertical landscaping and building elements to remedy the blank wall. And you can reference that in a vague motion if you wish.
Absolutely. Well, thank you.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions for staff? Or the applicant? Right, with that, I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Okay, we didn't hear from Dave, but. He's muted.
I think he muted himself.
He's muted himself.
Yeah.
Now, motion is through, so. Okay, commissioners, any? Thoughts? I mean, I think. Everything's pretty clean considering. Other than adding the condition of approval.
Oh Liz.
Uh, I mean, is there anything, so we've, you know, brought up the, you know, entrance coverage for the commercial spaces as well as a covered area. For uh, the residential spaces, which is outside of the, the platted. Areas, but we can work, they can work with staff on that. Um, and then for the independent, it's the vertical landscaping plus um, physical elements. Uh, to create less of a blank wall look.
Everything I have.
And I think we just identify since we, we have those others in our packet that's for the storage, the live work and the independent, whatever motion. I think that would be able to cover all three correctly, so we do one motion for all three?
Yep.
So if we just identify that those three items are. What's motion is addressing.
That or you can reference the application number, leaving out the micro town homes.
Okay.
That might be shorter.
That might be short.
So the application number.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so. I move to approve designer view twenty-five dash thirteen. Uh, with the elimination of the micro town homes with the. Uh, conditions of approval as discussed in our deliberations.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second for approval, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. You opposed? You know, motion is. Okay. Thank you, Alex. Okay, the next item is. The beauty final for twenty-five oh one, final plat for twenty-five oh two and design or DA.
You do not have a development agreement.
Do not have the development agreement. We're not doing that one, so just those two items for, to be determined from Pinedale Street. The Boyston Place Town Homes, do we have Darren Taylor here or who? Yep, Darren, please give me a name and address and let us know what you got.
Yeah, thank you Darren Taylor with David Evans and Associates, nine one seven five West Black Eagle Drive, Boise, Idaho. Eight three seven oh nine. Um, I'm the project manager for the project and the project engineer couldn't be here tonight. Um, Slacker is in Mexico. Right? Uh, I'm glad to be here. So we've been working on this fourteen town home. Um, subdivision, it's three lots plus the common lot. It's kind of a circle driveway, so you pull in off of Pinedale. And uh, go through the three lots and then come out onto Pinedale. So access is good. We've worked with the sewer district and gotten almost all of their requirements completed. Uh, the one requirement that remains is that the sewer line east-west in the back of the development. We'll, we're still working to get the CCTV and uh, get the low spots out. And of course, the district said, no work, thou shalt not work. Um, touch our system after uh, October thirty-first, so. There we are. So we'll do that uh, first thing possible in next spring. And uh, then we'll have the, the uh. Sewer districts uh, buy in. And according to the development agreement they had with this developer. Uh, this developer um, is able to pull building permits or permits from the sewer district and. And proceed, so we don't see that that's um, holding up anything tonight. We did replace the manhole in Pinedale. In Pinedale Road off of the east approach. Um, the sewer district originally said, no, it's okay. And then about sixty days ago, they came back and said, no, we want you to replace that manhole. So we uh, we pulled that out and, and did that. Um, this water system uh, has been installed, the trench compacted uh, to standards. Um, the water system has been tested, so no bacteria in the water. It's been tested for pressure. And then, as you know, they put tracer wire, um, taped that to the blue pipe. And uh, then they run a test at the. End of it and, and make sure that they can go back out and relocate. So we've passed our continuity test for water. And uh, the water department, Sabrina and her group um, are aware of that and have um, approved that. The uh, so we've got road and access and sewer and water. Along the entire north boundary um, is where. The design was for the stormwater from the parking lot to go. And that sand window um, actually exceeds uh, what was depth and width. What uh, was required in the uh, or approved in the construction drawings, so we're pleased to have that there. The uh, pathway that runs parallel with Pinedale. In between Pinedale and the housing units. Um, we were originally thinking concrete, um, asphalt works um, as well. And we were able to coordinate with the city and, and confirm that asphalt would be okay, so we've paved the, uh. Paved pathway. Um, for that entire area, but if you look at the construction drawing, it's called sidewalk. And the difference is pathways, asphalt sidewalks, generally concrete. Um, we did uh, because of the, the weather coming down and after our paver left. We did add the ADA domes to the pathways in the proper locations. And so we uh, cut out the asphalt, put concrete in and put those domes in, so. Uh, we're compliant with the American with Disabilities Act. The uh. There are, I'm going to call them ditches, but it's actually a big. Uh, drainstorm water conveyance, snow storage areas, if you want to call them that, along the entire west boundary and south boundary. And those have been shaped and um, sloped and the storm drainage pipes put in. So that stormwater will flow and we were out there with Chris Malvich. Uh, last week and uh, because there was some question on whether it would actually flow because of some of the elevations of pipe. And he did verify and we watched it and I videoed it, so it, it does flow, but we're going to improve that system a little bit um, next spring. By raising the storm drain pipe underneath the east. Um, approach, driveway approach. So we think we've uh, constructed, we know we've constructed the. Required improvements um, as uh, on the, as they were approved on the construction drawings. We've coordinated with uh, the city and with the sewer district. And um, we have a couple of items that uh. Uh, we have not done yet and those are on me. It's uh, pretty much making sure, and I'll coordinate with Meredith, uh, we've, or I said Meredith, I meant Morgan. Um, on the stormwater uh, piping. And making sure that our record drawings are accurate and then submit the two. CAD files in the two different digital formats the city requires. So that's why I say it's on me. It's, it's digital submission after I confirm with Mer- uh, Morgan. And same with the final plat, and then there was some question about uh, the landscape plan and it was done in two thousand twenty-three by Greg Bear's office. And I had forgotten all about it because originally the uh, there were some trees on site to be preserved. Well, when Kirk came out, he looked at this, he said, you don't need to save any of this. And uh, so um, there was deviation from the um, landscape plan at that point. And um, so every. Almost every inch of the property has been disturbed, no trees were preserved. And we just needed to update that landscape plan to reflect uh, those couple of notes and when landscaping would be put in. Um, for the city, so we did that. There was uh, one. Uh, comment back from the city's engineer's office today. And about the landscape plan and we uh. Made that change and, and got that resubmitted. Morgan, I don't know if you've seen that yet, it's just all today really fast, so we'll make sure that we get with you on that. Anyway, so the landscape plan drawing and then just the digital submissions of the final plat and the record drawings. Once we confirm with the city that those are that those are acceptable. The last thing Meredith brought to our attention was the contribution to the city in lieu of dedicate, building a park, making a park. It's a really small site and so a park at this location is probably not what the city is looking for. So years ago, when the project started, it did contemplate a contribution in lieu of a park. And so we just wanted to revive that and we'll do it using the city's current method. And that's through an escrow agreement. So the process today is different than it was in two thousand twenty-three. Because of actions taken by title companies, they don't like to hold long-term escrow without dispersing money. They're in the housing business. So this is just different. So we get it. Anyway, so we'll work through a, an escrow agreement with that contribution with the city. And then I think it's all zipped up. Happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners, any questions for applicant? We're good.
I'll be right here. Thanks.
Okay, Meredith.
So Darren's summary was very accurate. This project has been a long time coming. And the final plat, final plan submission came down at the end of the wire with the original entitlements. So they were good to apply for final plat, getting all that infrastructure work done. And we did notice because property ownership has transferred since preliminary. And there was a different developer involved at the beginning. That there were just a few things like the CCNRs that needed to be updated to correct the the information of who's the owner, who's the entity in charge of the project, et cetera. And can convey the project from one owner to another, as well as catch up on some of those pieces that would initially be resolved during preliminary plat. So one of those is the Parks and Lou fee. Earlier this morning, we actually figured out that it hasn't been deposited anywhere yet. So we're going to wrap that into this final plat process where it's not in your staff report because I noticed it this morning. But I'd recommend you add a condition to provide that draft escrow agreement in advance of the city council meeting. So that we can set up for receiving those funds for the Parks Department to use on a nearby park project. The nearest planned park would be the, actually the Broken Ridge Park, just to the north off of the Boyton area. Which might be like a frisbee area or soccer field. It's a long skinny park that can be accessed from a couple of different neighborhoods. So it could be that or it could be pathway completion, extension in that region, just something regional to that western area of town. So I'd recommend you add that as a condition of approval. And then it is in there to require an updated landscaping plan that has been provided this morning. I have not reviewed it yet. But it would be all new re-landscaping as well as CCNRs that do account for original proposed limitations to, hey Sabrina, your camera's on. I don't know if you're wanting to chime in on anything or not. Oh, there you go. And so the CCNRs included some language about the community managing short-term rentals. If any should occur in there as well as one local housing unit to be dedicated. So updated CCNR language has been included that should address those needs. But I do want to review them with the city legal council before it goes to city council. But they have provided those updates quite quickly. I let them know last week that they were missing. So they did turn them around quickly in the interest of getting things done. We don't get to mess with the design, but I believe Alan told me that his team has brought in a more internal construction and design company to address some of the original concerns with the design of the buildings. To make sure that the roofs drain in the appropriate directions and do pass muster with John Powell's office. So I believe they're already working with John Powell's office on getting that design upgraded and making sense in snow country. And then just to brief the council or the commission's memory. Trash bins are going in individual garages unless or until they decide they'd like a dumpster. But there is room to maneuver and Lakeshore disposal seemed comfortable with doing bins instead of dumpsters for this type of development. So other than that, I can stand for any questions.
Any questions for Meredith?
Meredith, is there any, is this going to be a phased project or will they all be built at the same time?
I believe they're starting with four units, but they have to complete all of them within their construction timeline. So. They might do one at a time, but they should finish within the, I believe it's thirty-six months after recordation.
So I guess my question is, when does the live or the workforce housing unit become real?
That one with the limited number of units and it not being a code required unit, it's really up to the developer to answer that question. But it's such a low number of units that in staff's opinion, having that be on the front end might not be feasible depending on financing for the full project. So if it's not in the first four, staff's okay with that, but I would really leave it to.
I don't believe it was one who required to get density either. It was just something they offered.
Yep.
Yep, that's fine. Just a question. And then I know the calculation of in lieu of has changed since twenty twenty-three. So I assume we'll see that in front of for Parks and Rec Committee. We'll see that come through there.
No, that one, I went back through the files and talked to Kurt and we do have the same agreed upon number. I believe it was thirty-five thousand plus the cost of that area improved park. So I think it's somewhere around the forty thousand mark. So I've sent that, but Kurt said, yeah, that sounds like the correct number. So it's already decided upon.
Great.
Any other questions for Meredith? Hey, Morgan.
Hello, commissioners. I don't have too many comments because most of my comments come with the preliminary stuff. So regarding public infrastructure, it is substantially complete and everything's passed so far. And there's just a few more things that we need to discuss and work through, which might be a condition of their final acceptance to complete in the spring. So I'm not too concerned with that. And then as Darren mentioned, the record drawings, we'll discuss that if it needs to be updated or not. And then we'll need those two digital files to accompany it. The landscaping plans that were submitted showed a lot of lands, a lot of plantings in the public right of way. And those just need to be removed. Because those are for snow storage and stormwater conveyance and not for the plantings. Those can go behind the pathway, but I think they've addressed that. I haven't looked at that email yet with the plan that's come through. For the plat, I sent over some red lines with a few questions and comments and they're pretty simple. On that, it's more regarding making sure they have their easements, declarations ready to go and all those other items figured out before we sign off on the plat. And then they just need their digital files as well for their plat submission before we can approve that. Please let me know if you have questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Morgan? Okay, this item is not a public hearing, so we will not have public comment. We had that with the original approval, just its final approval. So commissioners, any other questions for staff or any other questions or we're open or I'm open for a motion? If you do motion, keep in mind, need to add the draft escrow agreement for the park in Luffy. For. As part, yes, before city council.
I move to recommend approval of final plat twenty five oh two and PUD final plan twenty five oh one to the McCall City Council. With the staff recommended conditions of approval with the addition of a condition to provide a draft escrow agreement before scheduling the city hearing.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor? There are none, the motion is approved. Thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to final plat for twenty five oh three. I do want to note that in our packet, it was listed as twenty five oh two, the actual number is twenty five oh three. So it's correct on the agenda, just in the packet was identified as twenty five oh two. But with that, it's to be determined Fairway Drive. And I know we have Vince here to let us know we've got going on. Oh, I think you muted Vince and now you disappear.
Okay, sorry about that. Vince Beer, again, six twelve Diamond Street, fairly simple. Carving off the north fifty-seven feet of that property, it was once seven hundred fairway. But I also just am needing to give Meredith some kudos. Because I pushed her hard on the house next door that burnt and I was able to start on April twenty-first rebuilding that. And November first, we moved in a whole bunch of ski instructors and ski patrolmen from Tamarack who want to live in McCall. So you've got a bunch of happy people living in that seven-bedroom house that was burnt down last year. So thanks so much, Meredith, for accommodating us on that. It was a tough project. But this next house that we're going to build will be workforce housing also. The plan's already done. It's a six-bedroom with a bathroom in every bedroom. And we're working with, John's already seen the plans and we just need to get that land carved off and then we can move forward.
Right, commissioners, any questions for Vince? Alright, Meredith.
Yeah, so this is a final plat brought before you resembling a glorified record of survey. So as a reminder to the commission, this is a remainder parcel from multiple records of survey that creates a fifth parcel. So when you hit magic parcel number five, you do have to do a subdivision plat under McCall City subdivision code. So originally submitted, I believe all the way probably this time last year. That submitted this to split a pretty large parcel to the west of the softball fields off of Davis. To turn this parcel into two parcels. The one revision that they had to make at that time to meet the sewer density standards was to increase the size of the resulting parcel by just a few square feet. So that it would meet the minimum property size to receive a sewer hookup. So while he was dealing with the home burning down and rebuilding it. The surveyor did update this to accommodate the needs of the sewer district as well as identify some necessary utility easements, especially those two. Vince, your mic's on. Reflect the Davis reconstruction project and formalize this property's relationship to public rights of way nearby. So now you have the final plat that shows two zoning compliant lots that should be able to be served by utilities. And have one more housing unit as Vince manages for the workforce. Added to that strip that he hopes to someday call Fair Wage Drive. But for now, it's renamed Indy Sky after his granddaughters. That's all I have.
Commissioners, any questions for Meredith? Okay, Morgan.
Hello, commissioners. This one's pretty simple for me as well. I only had three comments when it first came in. One was to work with the sewer district on that easement and that's been addressed. The other was regarding note about access, that access to the properties need to be taken from the access easement east of the property. That's been added. So now all that's left is to finalize the plat document and give me digital drawings to review. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Morgan? Alright, well, once again, this item is not a public hearing. And so with that, commissioners, any other questions for staff? Or this one seems pretty clean and definitely open for a motion.
So I move, ready, I move to recommend approval of final plat twenty five oh three to McCall City Council with the staff recommended conditions of approval.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? There are none, the motion is approved. Alright, thank you, Vince.
Thank you guys very much. It's really kind of a, been a crazy blessing, that fire that could have been so devastating. Turned out to be a great blessing to go to a seven-bedroom, five-bath house that was only a three-three-three before. So it's weird how things work out, but thank you so much.
Great, thank you, Vince. Alright, other items, area of impact work session, I guess?
Yes, we got, sort of. So on Friday, you all have a work session with the city council to review recommended code amendments to address all the language in code about the area of impact. Because we don't need it anymore, given the circumstances applicable. As well as a few small code amendments that we wanted to throw in there that have been on our minds for the last few years. We are also planning probably in the next year, year and a half to do a larger omnibus code amendment process. But we wanted to do some small ones. So Friday will be your first touch work session. Communicating with the city council and staff where we present that language to you. And then probably just finally a good, good time to catch up with the city council after been probably a very long time since a joint work session, because we've been busy. Michelle, did you want to say anything about that?
Maybe just one other addition. One of the other purposes is basically to change the planning and zoning commission composition. So removing the impact area representatives and then making the commission of five member commission with city representatives. So that way, some of you can keep your jobs.
Everyone that I've got, hopefully you keep your job.
So that is at nine o'clock Friday here at this meeting.
And then the fun, oopsie, first part of that meeting is actually the first presentation by our new housing manager to the council. Your input, I'm sure, can be asked upon during that section on possible city-led housing projects that could be worth tackling in the next few years. So you'll need to declare that you've seen any information if an application should come through someday. But your insight is always helpful. And questions, as you may have them, as we go through those properties that the housing manager has identified for good opportunities.
I looked at that a while back.
So hopefully we'll have some fun and should keep it to ninety minutes or two hours max. So that we don't give you too much hooky time on a Friday morning from your usual responsibilities. Oh, and then your December meeting is going to be on the eighth, based on the four of you's ability to make it. So it'll be on the eighth, which is a Monday at four thirty. And that'll be to actually go through those code amendments formally at a public hearing. We don't have any other public hearings. We didn't receive any December applications. So it's my fault you have to be here. I'm sorry. Yay.
Well, you, you guys have to work on Friday this week, so it makes up for it.
Is there a holiday on Friday?
No, it hasn't started yet, Dave.
Excellent.
Oh, right, 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 right.
Oh, you're four-day weeks, yeah.
Right.
Starts after the holiday.
Yes, so internet, if you're out there, we have a four-day work week starting on December first. Um Monday through Thursday.
Tell them six o'clock at night or.
To like stay at your normal or you have to do it.
Um I believe we're supposed to work with our department managers to figure out how to make it function because I will still be here until ten o'clock at night on occasion. So I, I don't plan to come in at seven thirty on those days, but we'll see what happens.
So just to clarify, it's basically city hall, office hours are changing from seven thirty to five thirty, open to the public. But as Meredith said, I mean, I think within our department, there's a number of people who manage committees in the evening, so um it's probably not as rigid as that. Um we, we generally do everything by appointment anyway. So it really shouldn't change our operations too much.
I might still be here on a Friday. If I gotta get it done, I gotta get it done. But the door is locked.
She might respond to an email. Okay.
Phone doesn't work.
That uh concludes our agenda items. So it is five forty. I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting at five forty PM. Second, motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion is approved. Thank you, everybody.
See ya.
Bye, guys.